You made six.
Eighteen.
Okay, we're opened up for the September twenty-fifth Finance Committee meeting. Order of business will be the twenty twenty-six operating budget and questions and comments were needed.
All set?
All set.
All right, so in order to do this budget, I had to kind of project out twenty twenty-five. Project out the wages, projected out the remaining health insurance, pension payments, et cetera, so that's why there's an amendment on the agenda as well for the twenty twenty-five appropriations. Hopefully, the last one you need. Never know what's gonna happen November, December, weather-wise, that might affect wages, but hopefully, this nice weather will continue through the end of the year. So also, we're heading into a year of negotiations because our current three-year collective bargaining agreements expire at the end of twenty twenty-five. So when that happens, I never put a percentage, if you will, of proposed wage increases because you don't wanna just throw a number out there prior to negotiating with.
You don't wanna influence it and you don't wanna be wrong.
Yeah, somebody was talking about playing poker recently, you don't wanna show your hand.
And you don't wanna speculate.
You don't wanna speculate and you, yeah, just wanna build that in when it actually occurs and you have a real number. So to follow that point up, though, I did leave some cushion in each wage benefit category in twenty twenty-five, so it's not, you know, completely gonna be a big hit no matter, you know, if we get whatever the raise percentage is, so some of it or could be all of it will be covered by the cushion that's in twenty twenty-five. As usual, in my history, to just roll over the other category, you know, the line items that go into that other column that you see, unless there's something unique, and there is something unique in the police department. Page five, I did number the pages this time?
Thanks for that.
Yeah. So computer maintenance, professional dues, I bumped up a little bit, professional dues because they're starting, oh, there he is, the Lexi-Pole, which is your, explain with the policies.
Lexi-Pole has been around for a long time, how long has the fire department been using Lexi-Pole to you?
Well, more to retard.
Yeah, so basically, you know, you all are familiar with the Ohio Collaborative, and we work very hard to make sure we're compliant with the collaborative, and it takes a lot of time. The collaborative has recognized Lexi-Pole's standards as something everything, everybody does. We meet those standards by being qualified and being credited through the Ohio Collaborative, but they want a step further, if you have Lexi-Pole as your policies and updating your SOPPs through Lexi-Pole, you're automatically in, you're, we don't have to jump through all the hoops every year, Lexi-Pole, just being a member and following their protocol for SOPPs, you're already certified.
Can you define SOPPs, please?
Standard, Government Policy Procedure, my apologies.
Well, they know the thing Lexi-Pole does, it keeps these current national and state laws, so as they change at that level, they push down new policies that contain that to protect us.
And all their stuff is reviewed by a legal team nationally and at every state level, some of the changes that have affected us have been the collaborative, also recently the restraining females that are pregnant after initial arrest, neck restraint holds, all those things that have changed recently that have been case law changes, Lexi-Pole is rolling them out to departments that use their service right away, it's a policy all put together, reviewed by Ohio experts, we just implement it, it's kind of a no-brainer for us, and it's a little bit pricey, but in the long run, I mean, what's liability, the cost of liability too.
Right.
And one thing I really like about this is, in the service, like we, if we put out a new policy, we'll let everybody digest it, you read it, you sign off on it, and then we create a test for it, and we put it out to everybody, and everybody's gotta take the test and resubmit it back, they do all that, it's all done with their system, the testing, the scoring, the, you know, tabulation, maintaining the records that, yes, you reviewed this policy, we tested on it, you know that, and we can submit all that to the collaborative instead of putting it together every year like we do, so it'll be a lot of help.
Who was doing that in the past, Jay?
Me, and now I've been, Christian's learning, and it's a lot of work, I don't know that he realized exactly how much it's been, but he's doing very well at it, but this is, this is a game changer for us, so the cost has always been something that's kind of, maybe next year, maybe next year, maybe next year, but with some of the changes in the industry, it's, it's a necessity.
About twenty thousand a year, we're at it, right?
Yep, yep, and it's based off department size, yeah.
Okay.
So that's, that's where in here?
That's in contracted services for the police department, for the forty thousand.
Next, it'll be that every year, or it'll be twenty a year after this year?
No, there's other.
We have other contracted services.
Yeah, there's other contracted services in there.
Okay, so this additional twenty a year?
Yeah, yeah. That was really the only unique item that was different from this year in the other category, so while we're on this page, though, the EMS, these fees and distributions for EMS will go up, but that's a good thing because if they go up, the revenue goes up, correct? So, but that could change throughout, you know, it could be an amendment in twenty twenty-six or something like that, but again, that's offset with additional revenue for the bill. So the general, that's pretty much a general fund through page six.
I have a quick question on page one.
Okay.
The training for council went way up, I know that John, you did several things this year, will be added next year?
I mean, if he's doing similar to what he did this year, it'll be okay, but if we need to add more, we can, I don't know, I don't have it all next year. Okay.
Yeah, so this year, it was, was four thousand, or did we add?
We added four.
We added eight, okay, so it doubled, it'll probably go back down.
Okay.
But, okay.
Yeah.
Kind of that Jeff and I talked about, that I had approved him doing stuff, and Jeff approved it too, so.
There's also stuff council can go to if they want to.
Okay.
Now, they throw most of the stuff that we, those that get reelected, just online.
Okay.
I don't know if there's anything else that we can physically go to, I'm not aware of it, but if there is, I would let you go to it.
But, yeah, as in, a lot of these appropriations are over-appropriated and supposed to under, so we never run into a problem, and the department has, you know, they don't spend just because it's there.
Right.
What do we typically spend on the code updates, is it a portion of that four thousand?
Usually, it varies depending on how much state legislature changes, so like, some years it could be ten to fifteen thousand, others it could be like four grand.
Okay.
Also, we kind of mix it with mayor's court, they cut, like, the cost of lab is just pertaining to them, not just our local offices, so it's kind of under the same umbrella, but it varies from year to year.
Good to know.
And then on this page, you have workers' comp, which has been pretty steady, knock on wood, throughout the last few years. Fuel, you know, that's always a variable, but hopefully, that stays in the three-dollar range. Cemetery services, that's, you know, once a year, we have that meeting, and that's been pretty consistent, county health, that's through the, they take that right out of our property tax distribution.
So I see the mayor's office pool wages went up, and then the finance department wages went down?
Yeah, Kelsey moved.
So you moved someone between the offices?
Yeah, and then there, it's gonna be a retirement next year in the mayor's office category, out of HR, so, you know, definitely will, probably not hit this budget anymore.
I caught on to that one here.
Again, that's an example of not spending it just because it's there. So if you want to jump to, the general fund's not our, you know, not our only fund that we pay for operating expenses out of, because I consider any fund that has wages coming out of it as operating, so if you go to page six, we have the SCM and R Fund, we, you know what that is, Jay?
Oh, I knew this, now I totally slipped my mind.
Street, street maintenance?
Street construction, maintenance and repair. So a lot of our service departments paid out of there, and again, nothing special there, again, hospitalization, there is a cushion there, recently went to the meeting, the OGBC, Ohio Government Consortium, OGB, benefits consortium, OGBC.
I don't know what that is.
It's a consortium of currently eight communities that Finelli created, or Insurance Broker created, so the larger your insurance pool, you kind of spread your risk across, and we're with Medical Mutual, and over the last couple of years, Medical Mutual has other clients in the government world that aren't part of the OGBC, and we, I'm on the Finance Committee of the OGBC, and the Finance Committee and the OGBC as a whole has pushed to ask why, why can't you do that, so there's actually at the last meeting, potential up to eight more communities, now we're not gonna, we all vote to allow a certain community in to the OGBCs because we don't want, you know, a potential high-risk community with a lot of prior, you know, large claims into our OGBC, and we have advisors that the OGBC pays to advise us on that, so that's, that's a good thing, that they're hoping that our renewal rate will be in the single digits this year, was it last year we got socked?
We did it pretty hard.
Yeah.
Single digit as a percentage of?
Yes.
Increase.
Last year was around twenty, if I recall. Yeah, so.
It's all based on your usage, so they have complicated formula for services, you know, if you, if you spend a hundred percent of what you put into it, it's probably not a good look because they need to make money.
Yeah, they want you around the eighty, eighty-five range of usage.
But you're saying that the more communities you get added to that, it'll potentially lower our rate, or just keep the increase low?
I hope keep the increase low.
Okay.
And I did.
It's always gonna go up.
It's always gonna go up, that's what I thought, that's why I asked.
Yeah, and at the meeting, I asked, I said, okay, of these eight communities, you know, what's the largest one that you're talking about, because they could be member communities of fifty employees, there's one with three hundred.
But that three hundred could be?
No, that's a potential good one.
Oh, it's a good one.
Okay. So it was a promising meeting last week, last Thursday, actually. So then we have street mechanic section, three mechanics are paid out of there on page seven, street sign, we don't have anybody paid out of there because that guy is paid out of our two eighty fund for, you know, we have one service employee paid out of the two eighty fund, safety service fund, three firemen and one police officer.
That's the one that comes directly from the levy?
Yeah, levy, point two. Point two-five percent increase in, in contact, yeah. And so that's SCM and R Fund, the next section is parks and rec, there's two separate areas of parks and rec, the one up above is typically the lands, parks and rec, two employees, two full-time, some part-time in, in the summer helping to maintain, you know, the grounds, if you will. Down below is the, the two oh five section, which is the Family Rec Center. Nothing out of the ordinary here.
Is there a Rita retainer out of Parks and Rec up at the top, two oh four, two oh three?
Because part of our Rita income goes into two oh four.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Also in the two oh four is the contracted services, is that the additional resources to keep up the grounds that the service department frees up the service department to do?
Yeah, some of the, some of the grass cutting, you know, I think it's called tree line, is that the name of it?
Teacher?
Teacher. And by the way, the capital improvements of this budget that you see on line item here, that comes from our capital improvement meeting we had, so that actually matches what is on the twenty twenty-six capital improvement schedule for parks and rec. So you'll see that again on page nine, kind of in the middle of the page, capital improvement for Family Rec Center, and there's a remodeling line right above that, those two items come from our five-year capital plan.
What's the, the zero for custodial stamp, are we not doing that?
I think we're going back to third party.
So that's, is added in?
In the contracted services, yeah. And then we have our safety service fund, which I mentioned, we have three firefighters out of the first section there, you have the fire capital, the police capital, and the service capital, those line items are coming from our five-year capital plan, and you have the one service department employee at the bottom of page nine, and then you have the one police officer on page ten.
Could you explain what these transfers are?
Transfers, okay, so from a governance standpoint, your municipal income tax is supposed to come into the general fund, unless you have an ordinance that's, you know, disperses it like we do, it goes to, well, because of the safety service levy, if you will, that was passed at the point two five percent, that goes in the two eighty portion of it, so you typically don't need to transfer money into that fund unless you have a large capital item, so let's assume we just have our general fund and then everything else needs a transfer. So to fund those other funds, capital, street improvements, Family Rec Center, you have to transfer money from the general fund, because you're by law supposed to put all your taxing revenue into the general fund, and then you transfer it out, it's supposed to be a one-way street, because there's an advance, that's not a one-way street, to help support items paid out of all those other funds.
So everything comes into that general fund, even if it's on a levy?
No, if it's on a levy, it goes to two eighty, and then we have the road fund, because we have another levy that increases the income tax by point two five percent.
The road levy, that money is earmarked towards just road repair. Can't go to general fund.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, what about the one that is on the ballot this year?
That goes to general fund.
Okay.
Only, yeah, to help support police fire service out of the general fund.
Okay. Are there any more questions or comments? Okay, if there are none, the next Finance Committee meeting will be October twenty-third.
Twenty-fifth, right?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third? Oh, darn it. Oh, I'm thinking, I was looking at here, September twenty-fifth.
That's what we did today.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we did today.
I'm sorry.
Okay, do we need the half an hour again, just to make sure?
Well, what it'll be is, yeah, I would think, well, it's on the agenda, well, it's not on the agenda yet, but you have, we went over that piece, we went over the capital piece, we went over the operating piece, and we're gonna put it all together into the twenty twenty-six annual appropriations, so half hour is at most, yeah.
We'll need again, half hour before the work session starts, to be determined. Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're welcome. Anyone need a break before we go into work session?
All right, we've got time.
That's why I was offering it.
You get a word?
Yeah, all right, it's all in the mirror, isn't it? We can start with ordinance fifty-one, this is the residential driveways and parking areas, do you want to talk to it, or?
Sure, the planning commission's still working on us and just pulled it too, so you really don't even need to.
Don't even need to say it. Anybody else need to turn over a couple more?
Mayor, if I can add something to this, what really brought these up is the fact that we really, as a building farmer, have no control over those, because Section fifteen twenty-one oh three tells us that residents need a permit for concrete and asphalt driveway, but there's no provision for asphalt driveway with wax, so anybody can just put in their gravel driveway, don't get a permit, there's really nothing we can do about it, so I think, you know, this is another, I didn't say it's permitted, and I'm not gonna say it out there because I don't want to, I'm gonna notify the town, but we really need to have some in the post, or at least the press there.
And have you said that to the planning committee?
Uh, next minute.
Okay. Okay, so that's part of your discussion?
This is more of a legal question than I think I need to talk to Mark about it, we, regardless of what happens, I think we need to add something to our ordinance that, assuming that we are permitted to continue to use gravel driveway, we should have it to the ordinance that, you know, not only you need a permit for asphalt and concrete, you also need a permit for gravel driveway.
If this doesn't pass, if this doesn't come to fruition?
That is correct, yes.
I have a question, and maybe a legal question also, for Mr. Diddy to chime in on, if somebody's in the process of any of these things that are gonna be happening here, and it just hasn't gotten to the final approval yet, does that mess up their plan?
So, Diddy? So you're asking if a, if a, on a current project prior to completion is gonna be grandfathered in, is what you're asking?
Yeah.
Basically, yes, yes.
Probably, probably.
Okay, because I was approached on that.
Depending where they're at with it, but.
Thank you.
For, for a gravel driveway, is there anything that we would do differently, I guess, based on, like, if they got a permit, is there a way that they would get denied?
Well, we at least, we, we require a drawing, we, we would be able to control how wide it's gonna be, where it's gonna be.
Gotcha, okay.
What kind of material, how much, this way, we just.
Like how thick?
We know this is looking to the city, that, you know, there's potholes, there's rocks, there's weeds, the gravel has been displaced and some is washed out, there's mud, I mean, my idea is that, you know, probably should be permitted, that's just me.
If his present changes, don't get passed.
Right, right, yep. Any other questions? Okay. What would you like to do with fifty-three?
You were talking about?
This is the tip, I believe.
Okay.
Oh, again, haven't heard anything from the schools, don't plan to because we're keeping them home, so third reading, and then I could submit it to, you know, the company, send down to the state, and then I'm working on the holiday.
So we're prepared with the schools to proceed with it today?
Your add or pass the statutory fourteen-day period, objection period, they haven't objected, so you're okay before?
We're okay before, so we'll do third, and nobody objects, we'll do third reading on fifty-three? Excellent. All right, fifty-five is the recreational vehicle ordinance, I have received, I don't know if anybody else did, I did receive a negative comment related to this via the city's contact form, I don't know if everybody else did, so at this point, I've gotten one person saying we should change it, and one person saying we shouldn't, I'm thinking of, we can just hold this at second read today, have more discussion on it, I was hoping to get some more public participation, maybe like somebody come talk to us and tell us what they thought about it.
What was the, what was the context of the?
If I could paraphrase it, and I read it a long time ago, it was something along the lines of, don't pass this because you would have to enforce it, and we're not currently enforcing it anyway, and I'm paraphrasing that?
I did get that.
Okay, yeah.
I did get that one.
Okay, I may have paraphrased that wrong, but that's how I remember reading it.
Yeah, there was somebody highly upset about that because of the fact that all of this time, we haven't enforced it, and all of a sudden, we're gonna make a change and enforce it.
And if I'm being honest, that's part of the reason why I brought this forward is, if we're not going to enforce it during the summer months when people want to use them, maybe we should look at opening that up, and then in the winter months, when they should be parked and winterized and out of sight, out of mind, enforce that, right, but we can keep talking about it, I'm not trying to take this to a vote tonight, but I figured I'd read it, I'd move it to second reading tonight, and we can keep talking about it in work session.
And you'll still need planning commission referral?
Right, and I don't, I don't wanna go to that point, now, we would do that before we went to third, right?
Yeah.
Unless, actually, does everybody here want to do that at this point, should we send it to planning commission and see what better feedback is?
Residents are clamoring to, to tell us, so, but planning commission is a group of residents, you know?
And they might come back with ideas I'm not even thinking of, so.
So let's do that sooner than later.
Okay, do we need to vote to do that?
Yes, sir.
Is that a separate motion?
Yeah, yeah, you could, a simple motion refer to the planning commission?
All right, I will do the motion to refer, and in lieu of any reading, right, just leave it at words up?
Yeah, you could leave it where it's at.
Okay, all right.
I mean, you've technically advanced it to second if you want to, but it's up to you.
I'll just do the motion.
Let me ask you a question.
Yeah?
Is there any chance that, that thirty-day period could be kind of extended, because by the time it gets to the planning commission, and maybe the meeting is not scheduled for a few days after that, they will not have enough time to probably discuss that, can we?
That's up to council, they can do that now, or they can do that later, the commission needs it, it's really up to council.
We've done it, we've done it before.
When do they meet next?
The next meeting will be on the twentieth of October.
Why don't we give it forty-five days instead of thirty, or more?
Well, they, so you're saying they wouldn't be have time to discuss it on that meeting? Because it's, they're gonna have a full agenda?
Depending how soon can we notify them, maybe tomorrow?
Tomorrow, okay.
Yeah.
They may have enough time.
Okay, and actually, I was gonna ask that we do that, I was gonna suggest that any time we send anything to the planning commission, we should ask the clerk to tell them the next day he's in the office, because. Because, um, I actually heard from the planning commission that, um, they came to a meeting and had no idea we had sent them something and found out about it when they arrived, and had they known that we had sent it to them, they would have read up on it ahead of their meeting. So, if we're gonna send something to the commission, unless it's prohibited.
No, it should go out to the commission as a whole.
Immediately?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, if nobody objects, I was gonna ask, uh, the clerk to do that anytime we do that.
Yeah, it sounds practical.
Yeah, give them a heads up, right? Um, okay, so then, I'll make a motion to, to refer it, and, um, we'll go from there, and if they need more time, we'll revisit it. Fifty-six, this is yours, Counselor Ventura.
Is canvases still necessary in this particular reading of my title only?
I'm sorry?
Canvassers, is that, can that be deleted from this?
From the title?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah, you'll wanna make a motion to amend, to be consistent with the most recent version, counsel got.
So, you need to make a motion to amend the title, or we just ask the clerk?
To amend the ordinance.
But do, do we ask the clerk to just not read the word canvassers, or are we amending the title to?
You'll, well, you'll amend, so it'll be.
Are we amending both?
Two motions, or you can make it together, it'll be a motion to eliminate the word canvassers from the title.
Uh-huh.
And to make consistent with the most recent version distributed to council.
Okay. You got that, Ben?
To be consistent?
With the most recent version distributed to council. So, basically, the version that's in the public packet for tonight.
Okay. And I'm sure when I miss this, somebody else will help me out.
What are the changes that are being introduced?
Um, we managed to find a, uh, legal s- issue, uh, that we could, uh, stay with without eliminating too much as far as the time. Uh, Mr. Cadetti researched that, we didn't wanna be, uh, involved in any constitutional issues, but it now is, I believe we have it until six o'clock, or no?
Sunset. So, you're essentially eliminating the half hour after sunset, and just leaving it at sunset, and eliminating canvassing throughout the ordinance? So, just applying the penalty.
And we're not doing anything with the cost of permitting, the permits or anything else that?
I mean, yeah, I don't know if you, as far as I know, no.
Okay.
We need the cost split up to a hundred, but you're saying it's not changed from the last time we talked about it?
He's not raising it again.
We're not, we're not rea-, we're not, we're not gonna be able to go to a hundred. We're gonna have to stay at the twenty dollar permit fee.
That's, to a certain extent, for council to decide, but it should reflect the actual administrative costs of.
Right.
Doing it.
And, and I, and I really.
Have they taken out, is that part of, is that?
Mark, there was confusion, I think, by the way, the police department was interpreting the current ordinances, and I think that has been clarified, you know, on how the fee should be applied, or is that something?
Well, you, I mean, there's still a dollar figure in the code, so.
Exactly, but the interpretation has always been, if you own a business and you got twenty people that solicit for you, you come and get a permit, and it costs twenty dollars. But in the interpretation, that's the way it has been for decades. I think we were improperly interpreting that, it really is.
It's a per solicitor basis, yeah.
Ten, yeah, your fifteen, twenty employees all need to register.
And it's on the books today?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that, so that means that the costs now also go to each individual that is listed? Is that how we have it written up?
It's per solicitor, yeah.
Per solicitor, okay.
But there's.
That's where that went.
But Counselor Ventura, he's also saying that's current law today of the city.
That's why we decided we can't, one of the reasons why we weren't gonna move.
The initial permit.
Just to interpret, exactly.
Cause he had his administrative assistant tally up the time and the effort.
Yep. And that's still around twenty dollars?
Per solicitor, yeah.
Per solicitor, yeah.
So, that's not in what we're reviewing? So, what we're reviewing says an application is a hundred dollars.
Currently. Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Ventura had made a decision on what, uh, where he ended up on.
Okay, so the application, so seven-six-one point oh three M says a hundred dollars. Is that a, that is per person, it doesn't say per person in here, but then.
That's not the current ordinance, that's a proposed.
It's a.
That's a proposed change.
Which, I don't think that's still the current proposed change, correct?
I mean, it has.
I don't know, I, I don't think it decided.
I'm sorry, then, we, you and I talked about this.
Yes, we did.
Yes, and no, we're not making it a hundred dollars.
Okay.
The, my administrative assistant figured out the exact amount of time, went through the whole business, and if we were gonna leave it at twenty, however, with Mr. Cadetti's help, the way we were interpreting, the previous administration was interpreting the ordinance incorrectly, every person soliciting in the city will register, even if they all work for Joe's Window Cleaning. Everybody Joe sends out in the city has to have a permit.
Well, it seems that, so, right now, if we were to vote on it as it's written, it's said a hundred, so that wasn't changed. But I would also suggest that we make it more clear that it's per, cause it doesn't, it's not really clear in the way that it's written, you know?
The current code is clear, so I mean, I would suggest leaving it at this reading, I could meet with Mr. Ventura and.
I was just gonna suggest that.
Pete Yakapogich to make sure it says what they want it.
Leave it at the first reading or go into the second reading?
I would just leave it at the first.
Okay.
Okay. My suggestion, I guess.
I, I, I'm on board.
So, we're not even doing it, now you don't have to make any motions.
Yeah, we can clean it up, make it ready to be, and just vote it two and three next time. Okay, are you okay if I move on? Are you, are you okay if I move on, or did you have more to talk about?
No, no, that's it.
Okay.
I'm good.
Um, number sixty-four is related to the RVs, I'm just gonna leave that since we're sending the other one to planning commission? Is that okay? Okay. Uh, sixty-nine.
Okay, so, yeah, the memo, uh, I talked briefly about it. Uh, the finance committee meeting, uh, changes to the estimated resources were all in the TIF funds because we received our second half settlement. And the changes in the appropriations were all wage, uh, and benefit related, except for the TIF funds. Adjusted and transfers out, uh, based upon the money coming in, that changed.
So, why was the collections from that one TIF six hundred thousand dollars?
That, that gets forwarded, we don't even touch it, comes into us, we forward it to the trustee.
Why is it so much more than?
That, that was the one, that, that was Summit Point.
Okay.
Which is that way.
Hmm.
And that's how it was voted on, uh, by council at the time, to, uh, collect all the money and pass it along to the trustee, who then sends it to Summit Point and the schools portion, till they disperse. But I don't know why we're involved, we, we, we shouldn't be involved.
Okay.
But I wasn't here at the time.
Okay. So, it's not like a huge windfall for the, it's not a six hundred thousand dollar windfall for the city, we still get, we still get an amount?
We, we get nothing.
We get nothing out of it, okay?
Okay. So, sixteen or sixty-nine, are we gonna do one, two, three on this?
Yeah, if you could, please, yeah.
Yeah, I would propose that, too. Okay. Um, resolution seventy is, uh, entering into a settlement, do you want to talk about that?
Just the opioid settlement again?
Yeah, this is for, it's a kind of conglomerate of secondary opioid manufacturers, they've reached settlements, uh, through the state, so, again, similar to, I think, the last council meeting, if you would like the city to participate, um, then, I would say, you know, vote in favor of this resolution, if you're in favor of participating, the deadline for filing the requisite paperwork is October eighth.
Okay. Good, knowing that, I'm gonna advocate for one, two, three.
Hmm.
Um, ordinance seventy-one.
Seventy-one, some, uh, title changes that Director Yakapogich.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, um, this is associated with our rec manager for aquatics, um, position, changing the title to just aquatics, removing the fitness part of that, um, and adding some of those duties onto a specialist's, um, job. So, it would go, it would just be rec manager for aquatics, and then an aquatics and fitness specialist, given the amount of work that it takes in the aquatics department, adding in the fitness part of things, um, it doesn't, there's a lot of duties that the fitness part of things also requires, so, taking those, those duties away implies knowing there's much more to worry about.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Um, are you, uh, looking to do this tonight, one, two, three?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have checked? Okay. Do you want to talk about seventy-two?
Sure.
I'm looking, so, we are.
Who's on seventy-two, by the way?
To offer it?
Yeah.
It's brand new, I was gonna offer it, do you want to second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
And I'll make the motion to waive.
Okay.
So, this is the next big step in our design build process for our new service building. Um, I can tell you that Director Wilson and Director Gilati and I have put in an inordinate amount of time today with all these folks trying to decide who is the best fit for this, we had nineteen submissions for the design build contractor, we narrowed that down to four, met with them two weeks ago to kind of get questions from them to us. Today, they came in with us asking them questions, uh, pretty much all day, a little tired, getting home, getting home a change, but, um, we've narrowed that down to Beaver. Uh, the big thing with this and why I'm, I'm pushing this forward and asking you for your support today, you kind of got a lot more than you really needed, but if you look at the schedule on there, they're ready to go next week. Uh, we are, we are really pushing to get this thing moving, we started this process in two thousand nineteen. We're, we're at the point now where we're really, we're gonna start to see some progress. They're well within the numbers of what we have, um, I think they're at one point six for their, their fee for everything, but this is the next big step, and if we don't have the support and I can't get them moving, we're in stalemate. So, don't like to rush things, but at the same time, the, the, the building needs to get done, we're really needing to surge forward. Uh, the facilities we have, I'm not gonna be a dead horse, I think, I hope all of you have toured them, and if you have it, you need to. I think, have you, have you toured them? Have you toured them, have you toured them?
Yeah.
So, that you kind of know where we're at, it's, it's a safety thing to me, and I really wanna get this moving, and this is the next big step. If there's anything I'm missing there.
Yes, sir.
I'm asking for your support on that, um, again, a lot of time and effort has got us to this point today. It's been, it's been a long day working on this, but, uh, you got a lot of information in front of you, you got the last minute, and I, I understand that it stinks that you got it so late, but gotta have a little faith in me and, and where we're headed with this thing, and the law department's guiding me on this path, so.
Well, it is worth noting, so, there is a selection committee internally that was assembled that reviewed all the qualifications that the city initially got, and then the proposals that were thereafter solicited. The election committee reviewed all those, ranked who was the best value for the city, and that came out with Beaver. So, it, it's gone through a multi-level review just before it got to you guys, so.
And that selection committee also included GPD, a lot of professionals that do this on every day, all day, they have everything in-house, they were very, very helpful with getting to this point to, to pick this contractor, so. I'm very confident this is the one, and I think this is gonna move us forward, if I get your support.
Anyone have any questions? I'm assuming, based on the urgency to start, we want to do one, two, three, obviously.
Yeah, if you look through there, the, next week.
Yep, I saw that. Okay. Uh, we'll do that. Anyone have, have anyone, anything else they want to discuss before we go out?
We've got two minutes.
We've got two minutes. Thank you.
Council meeting, it is seven thirty-two PM, Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brenner.
Here.
Mr. Fraro.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Now I ask Chaplain O'Brien to lead us in the invocation.
Honorable members of City Council, distinguished guests and fellow citizens, as we gather here today for this important City Council meeting, we invoke the spirit of unity and collaboration. In this diverse and vibrant community, we come together with a shared commitment to a betterment of our city and the well-being of our citizens. Let us remember that our roles as public servants carry a profound responsibility to uphold the principles of fairness, justice, and progress. As we deliberate on matters that shape our city's future, may we approach each decision with wisdom and empathy, always keeping the interests of our community at heart. May the discussions and actions taken today lead to a stronger, more inclusive, and prosperous city for all who call it home, and let us be ever mindful of our first responders, those brave men and women will keep our city and its citizens safe, both day and night. In closing, we ask for the blessing and comfort for our neighbors who may be suffering from physical, mental, or financial distress, cheer them and bring them thy blessing of health and happiness. Amen. Now with hand over heart, please join our mayor and our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain O'Brien, appreciate you. Okay, next up on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up is public comments, large crowd today, don't think we have any, nope, correspondence from the clerk.
Yes, sir, I have one message that was sent to the mayor's office, it's from Janet and Jeff Gliya at seventy-six zero eight Tiber Court, says, "We just wanted to thank everyone involved with the handling of our issue with speeding on Twinsburg Road, from the mayor Nick Molnar to City Council President Jeff Garvis, the court clerk counsel John Hoover, to all officers and dispatchers, we appreciate your attention to our problem, we were totally blown away by your concern and speedy response, it makes us know that we definitely have the right people in office, thank you again," and that's all.
Thank you. Moving right into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number fifty-three.
I move to offer ordinance number fifty-three, twenty twenty-five for its third reading by title only.
Second.
An emergency ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose, describing the public improvements to be made which directly benefit such parcels, requiring the owners of the improvements on such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a NCR municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such service payments pursuant to our vice code sections five zero nine dot four zero, five zero nine dot four two, and five zero nine dot four three.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a tiff for the project happening up by the northern end of the city next to the bowling alley, that will allow us to capture property tax dollars that would have went to the county, that we can use for public infrastructure improvements needed in that area.
Thank you, someone make sure they could hear you. Had some residents say they couldn't hear because the mic was up, so, I won't make you repeat all that, any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number fifty-three, twenty twenty-five, and post same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance fifty-three carries. All right, ordinance number sixty-nine.
Are you skipping fifty-five?
Yep, hold on, just get it to twenty. Okay, I'm making, did you guys want to do that?
I was gonna refer it.
Okay, I'm sorry, ordinance, I'm sorry, ordinance number fifty-five.
So Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to refer ordinance fifty-five, twenty twenty-five to the planning commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now ordinance number sixty-nine.
Yes, I offer ordinance number sixty-nine, twenty twenty-five for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance amending ordinance number seventy-four, twenty twenty-four relative to current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Macedonia for the period of January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor, this has to do with our annual appropriations, it's the second amendment so far this year, we discussed the few changes that are happening to it in caucus, there's a memo attached, that's it.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I offer ordinance number sixty-nine, twenty twenty-five to be adopted and posted according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance sixty-nine carries. Resolution seventy.
I move to offer resolution number seventy, twenty twenty-five for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency resolution authorizing the mayor to approve and participate in national opioid litigation settlement with Alvegin, Amneal, Apotex, Hikma, Indivior, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus.
Director Ghadetti.
So this is similar to the legislation that council passed at the last council meeting, this is essentially to participate in opioid litigation settlements reached by the state, this is for what's known as secondary manufacture of the council, for which we're just red.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt resolution number seventy, twenty twenty-five, and post same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution seventy carries. Ordinance number seventy-one.
Mayor, I offer ordinance number seventy-one, twenty twenty-five for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance providing the current compensation schedule for the non-union employees of the city of Macedonia, Ohio.
Director Eckendorf.
Thank you, Mayor, this is just an amendment to two position titles at the rec center, changing it to an aquatics-only position named the recreation manager for aquatics, and then also amending a specialist's title to aquatics and fitness specialist, is due to the number of duties that come with both aquatics and fitness that one person, one person would not be able to do both jobs to the extent that we need them to, so sharing the duties across both sides.
Thank you, any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass ordinance seventy-one, twenty twenty-five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance seventy-one carries. Ordinance number seventy-two.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the forty-eight hour rule and add ordinance seventy-two, twenty twenty-five to the agenda tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And I would like to now offer ordinance seventy-two, twenty twenty-five for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Beaver Constructors, Inc. as the design builder for the construction of a new service building in Salt Dume.
So as we talked about in, in the work session, we had nineteen submittals for the design build contractor, we narrowed that down to four, I'm referring to the we being our team here at the city and the GPD group that we hired to come in and help advise us on this process because they did the design for us, narrowed it down to the four, met with them two weeks ago for their questions, today was for our questions, and we came up with Beaver Construction being the best suited fit for us to move this thing forward. Many, many steps involved in this, but this will be the one that starts to see progress. I think we'll begin to see actual things on the site probably November, December, so you, we'll actually have equipment moving and, and things happening, and I can assure you, we didn't take a feckless approach to this, we're doing our due diligence in everything we do, and making sure that we're on top of our game, and, and putting a building up that's conducive to the operation that serves our residents. Everything we're doing here is not only for the safety of the employees, which is most important to me, but the way we serve our residents, and Director Wilson will attest, this will make a big difference in the way that that department operates, and it's gonna only help us to serve the community better. Lay off on that?
No.
Any questions or further?
Could you say that?
Thank you, any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I would move that we pass and post according to law ordinance twenty, I'm sorry, seventy-two, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Ordinance seventy-two carries. Any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move into the mayor's report, I'm a little early on this this year, but I'm gonna put it out there, that Halloween trick-or-treat is on October thirty-first from six to eight, something we do consistently every year, on October thirty-first from six to eight, I hope you have a fun, nice evening, and the weather is conducive to trick-or-treating, so October thirty-first, six to eight, any of your friends ask, you heard it first here. This Saturday's Fall Fest, I'm not gonna do too much on that, I'm gonna let Director Eckendorf talk about that, I do not want to steal his thunder. I want to thank those of you that voted to move the service building forward, I think you all recognize the safety that's needed for our employees and, and how this will help serve the community better in the future, and I can't thank you enough for your support along this process, I can assure you that we have put a lot of hours into this, Director Wilson, Director Gilati, Director Ghadetti, and myself have put many, many hours into pushing this to forward to, to get us to where we need to be, so I won't belabor that point anymore. I want to talk about scam emails, apparently we had one come through to one of our contractors saying that it was from the planning commission, and they needed money, and they needed to send money to whatever it may be. It's a very difficult thing, and I'm sure Director Collins could talk about this a little bit too, but there's so many scams out there, and you just gotta be weary of everything, and if you get something in an email asking you to send money, you just gotta be weary of it and ask questions, if you get something saying that the city of Macedonia is demanding money from you, call us and ask us, I mean, there's a lot of them out there, and there's a lot of scams going, but just be weary, because we're, we're really, I don't think in any way, shape, or form, we ever email anyone and ask for any money in any way, is there, am I missing something, gentlemen? So, I mean, there, there may be in some instances, but it's very unlikely, and if you're getting it haphazardly and it's something awkward, it's probably a scam, so just, just be weary of everything and know that leary of everything.
Yeah, the only instance would be if somebody's going for our mayor's board and they've given their email, so they would just, you know, outside of that.
Yeah, but just be leary of those things, because there's a lot of scams out there, and I've, I've know a lot of, they like to attack the, the older population, and then they're really nasty with the things they do to them, and I want you all to just be weary of it, and I think leary, sorry, I know we...
We're weary of it, too.
Weary and leary.
Yeah.
I'm weary from it.
I know we, I know we do a lot of things through our, our senior programs, I, I'm pretty sure we had some people down there talking about that too, and if there's more things I can get, we'll put out to our website and our, our social media to talk about that, but it's just keeping an eye out for it, there's so many details and things you gotta look for, and it's, it's just, it just boggles my mind that people are so disgusting to steal money from people like that, so, anyways, we do have a planning commission opening, if you're interested, go to our website, we're asking for resumes for that, it'll direct you to where to send that to, I've got one submission so far, if anyone on council knows anyone that may be interested in it, I would encourage you to ask them to, and we'll get the right person in place to, to fill that void. And last but not least, don't drive distracted, please put the phones down, drive the car. Committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission has their next meeting at six o'clock on October fifteenth.
Finance committee meeting will be, the next one will be October twenty-third, one half hour prior to the work session. Okay, department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor, first off, the elevator update project is complete, thanks to Gable Elevator, they did a fantastic job, so, I think it was completed right on time, something much needed here, so, leaf season is October fourteenth, we're starting, there's some new leaf machines, we're excited, and the leaves are coming early, they're already here, we already have some piles out there, so, check the website, all the information, zones, all that stuff, it's all on the website, thanks to Christie for all her help, she's always helping me out, also, everything the mayor said with the service complex, we have spent a lot of time on it, we really truly have, and it's well worth it, I'm excited, the guys are excited, and just thanks to council for all your support, as always.
Director Eckendorf.
Thank you, Mayor, as you mentioned, we are excited for Saturday's Fall Fest, that is from four-thirty to nine-thirty, just a reminder that this event is for Nordonia residents, district and city employees, MAC rec members, and their guests, and that anyone under the age of eighteen will need a parent or guardian to help us enjoy the evening, also includes the fireworks at the end of the night, those are at nine o'clock, we'll have plenty of food trucks, some beer and wine vendors, and we'll be showing college football games, we'll also have some things to do for the kids in our kid zone, so we're excited to have everybody at Longwood Park on Saturday from four-thirty to nine-thirty. We have two projects that are rolling right now, the first one is the trail project at Longwood Park, as a reminder, that's a ten-foot wide paved trail around the park that people will, is more accessible to more residents and guests to the park, they are moving very quickly, we've been fortunate with weather that they've been able to move as quickly as they have been, so we're eagerly awaiting the completion of that project, and also, if, if you've been in the building, it's been a little noisy over at the rec center, they're in the demolition phase of the two projects going on there with the family locker room and the administrative office project on the second floor, so expect a little bit more noise here in the next couple of weeks, but it should die down once they get all the walls knocked down and can start making it what we need it to be, so, again, just making it through all those projects, and excited to see the end of it, end of report.
And thank you for all you've done, you're kind of getting thrown to the fire, you're a little over two months into your position and have a major event and a lot of things going on in that, that park and the recreation center, so thanks for all you're doing. Director Vares.
Just wanted to thank council for approving ordinance sixty-nine, twenty twenty-five, and hope it's the last amendment of the year, end of report.
Director Collins.
Thanks, Mayor, thirty-two helped us tickets since the last meeting, major projects quadrupled our onsite storage, as well as fixing a group security sync issue that's been lingering for a little while, thanks, end of report.
Another big thank you to Director Collins, he's been through a lot with our technology of late, and I can't thank you enough for, for keeping us on the up and up of that, as I talked about with the scams that are out there, those are things that you look for and you try to keep us safe with our technology, so thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor, the sidewalk program is in full swing, it's not going as fast as I would like it to go, as a matter of fact, they're running a little bit behind, completed our Langston Road, Firestone, Ledge, Bishop, Long, Eaton, Springill, Chris Wald, Isabel, and Lawton. Currently, the contractor is working on Brookshire, Deepwood, Longbrook, and Ridgeview. The areas that have not started yet, the area A, B, E, F, G, and H, so there's a lot of work to be done yet, he actually had two months to complete this, I think he's gonna ask for at least one month extension to, to get it done. New business in, in the city, Divinity Landing and Holiday and Express are working very hard to be able to, to pour some kind of base, so they're not gonna be tracking mud on the street, right now, they have all the underground utilities pretty much completed. New business in the city other than those two, Enden Stone Spa is gonna go at five-hundred East Aurora Road, which is right next to DJ Max, Floor Scapes, which is a flooring company, moved in at five-seventy-six East Highland Road, and Howard's Mechanical, which is a heating and cooling company, they've moved in at four-eighty-three and four-eighty-five Highland Road, they're occupying two spaces there, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor, just want to remind everyone, October eighth, we have our annual open house, it's, we can no longer call it the fire department open house, it is, for the first time ever, combined with the police department, with, they'll be swearing in of all of our new employees within the last year, so their families can come, residents can come, welcome to the community, we're going to have food trucks there, again, also, things for the kids to do, and it's always well-attended, and I will defer at this point to Chief Yakapovich, because he says I always steal his thunder.
Well, I want to thank Chief Ripley, Mayor, for not mentioning anything about the open house until it was my turn, that's, I thought, the plan, actually, we're, we're very pleased to be part of their open house.
Our open house.
For years, the fire department's had this tradition, and the police department is glad to join in this year, and we look forward it to being a yearly thing, so we really would like to see everybody come out, you could tour the police department, everybody gets a kick of walking back through the jail cells, we'd be glad to give everybody a tour, there'll be, you know, police cars you can jump in and out of, take a look at them, there's a lot of activities over at the fire department, we'd like everybody to come out, end of report.
I appreciate your collaboration between the two departments, one thing to also add, I don't think you touched on, the elevator is up and running, so our senior programs are back on for tomorrow, Chief?
They've, they've been out the whole time, we've been holding them...
In, in the basement.
In, in the bays, and Dan's staff has been very gracious to show up first thing in the morning, set up tables and chairs for sixty to a hundred people, then come back at two in the afternoon and tear it all down so we can park our fire trucks back in the bays.
Department for others.
Yep.
No, that's us.
It, it's, it's been stressful on the senior center staff, if you think of all the supplies they've had in the basement, that they thought they brought everything up in the elevator before it went down, but of course they didn't, they also had stuff in the park, but seniors loved it, so it is nice to have the elevator back.
So they are in the basement tomorrow?
Yes.
Just want to be clear, the elevator's functioning, and they'll be in the basement tomorrow.
Yes.
The community room, I should say. Director Ghadetti.
No report, sir.
I want to thank Director Ghadetti today, I have a lot of thank yous today, this gentleman had a rough day and, and was able to come through for me on some legislation that he all supported today, so I want to thank you for expediting that and, and doing that for me, given the circumstances you had today. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So... Mayor, excuse me, I made a phone call to you earlier, that I thought you might bring up for next month.
I'll do it next month.
Okay, I, I wanted to add to that.
Okay. Breast cancer awareness, I'm sorry, I was gonna do it next month.
Okay, but in, in the, in the fashion of the past, to be prepared for that, most council members have shirts that we've worn in the past, and I'd like to ask everybody to wear those shirts that we have worn in the past for the first council meeting in October. I'm sorry I interrupted you like that, but that was the reason I wanted to get it out there, so we were all in the same... I'm sorry I interrupted you like that, but that was the reason I wanted to get it out there, so we were all on the same page.
Sorry about that. Any other new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.